Can I have your attention, please? We're going to be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Tuesday, August 21st, 2018. Tonight, we have two public hearings on. The first matter is a site plan review and a special permit at 28 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Bonham Street. We had a request from the applicant to continue this matter to our September 6 meeting due to the fact that they're still working on the current site plan and need more time to do the formal hearing. What's the request of the board for the continuance on Mount Vernon and Bonham Street?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to...
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Sneski. So that matter will be continued to our Thursday meeting, which is September 6th, to Thursday night because of the Labor Day holiday.
Mr. Chairman, it's on the record. I have a steen on that bolt.
Okay, so the vote is four in favor and one abstention. Okay. So moving on, thanks for the matter. We have a special permit for 102 Appleton Street. An application was submitted by Einstein Realty LLC seeking special permit approval for the planning board and a variance from the zoning board of appeals to redevelop an existing building into two commercial units and four apartments at 102 Appleton Street. The building is in the urban mixed-use district and needs special permit approval from the planning board under Section 6.1.66 to reduce the residential parking requirement and under Article 12, Section 12.1D for the four dwelling units. There'll be a various request from the zoning board of appeals at a different date when we hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Ms. McCall, for the record, my name is Attorney Steve Geary. I represent Einstein Realty. And with me here today is my brother John, who's my law partner, Keith Caveney from CAC Architects here in Lowell, and the Gao family, Einstein Gao, his wife Lan, and their son Vince. And they own several properties in the city of Lowell and have for many years.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, we're before the board tonight seeking two special permits. One special permit for the right to have residential units in a building that's going to be repurposed for a mixed use of residential and commercial. The residential use will consist of three two-bedroom units upstairs and a studio. On the lower level will be, the proposed project would include a restaurant on one side and a coffee shop on the other. So this building is located at 102 Appleton Street. It's now an abandoned building, and its prior use was that of a drug and alcohol rehab place. And I think it was, one component of it was residential patients there at one point. So it did house residential patients at one point. I'm not sure when, but it has been abandoned for a while prior to my client's purchase in this property in December of 2017. Since that time, they've been working with plans to redevelop and repurpose this property. And to do that, we have to come before your board. We have to come before the zoning board of appeals if we're approved here for variances. And we have to go before the historic board since this project or this property is located in historic zone. Just by procedural background, we have already been working with Ms. McCall and various members of the planning department right from the onset for several months on this property, getting their feedback, sitting down with them, getting some ideas, and then incorporating those ideas into the plans that are before you tonight that have been prepared by Mr. Caveney. A lot of, almost all of what the proponent proposes here is completely consistent with the Jackson-Appleton Middlesex Urban Revitalization Plan as well as the City Housing Development Zone Sustainable Lowell 25 Plan that requires or seeks to have applicants come up with some market rate housing. And this is a mixed use, which is perfect in that area. So just if you haven't been by, you don't know, but it's across from the juvenile courthouse, 80 feet up from that public parking lot there. So the request, the second permit for parking requires our client to get a special permit to reduce the parking by 50%. In order to do that, they do qualify for that because they're within the 1,500 feet of the Edward J. Early garage. And that would reduce their parking to something that's, that would be very doable before the board of appeals. Very similar to other projects that have come before this board in Appleton Street and other areas, there's simply no parking, off-street parking in this area and in a lot of areas of downtown Lowell. It's not considered the downtown Lowell area, but if you read the comments by Mr. Alves, the assistant planner, he says that this virtually, we wouldn't need any relief if it were just a few feet over. And it's the same idea. It's just outside of that area, but it's the same idea, to bring mixed-use development into this area, to repurpose these old abandoned buildings and revitalize them. And it's exactly what the Gao's are doing. So this, the special permit meets the criteria whereby the adverse effects, if any, are not, do not outweigh the beneficial impacts. There's a social, economic, and community need in this proposal that is met. The traffic flow will have virtually no impact on the traffic flow at all. And the anticipated hours of operation would be in the morning right through the evening for the restaurant, and that's consistent with most of what's going on in that area. As you probably all know, after 5 o'clock, there's very little going on in that area. And there is plenty of parking at that time. There's no safety issues. They can't be addressed with proper lighting. There's adequate utilities and adequate public service. The neighborhood character and social structure won't change at all. It will benefit by this project. There'll be no impact on the natural environment. And there will be a positive fiscal impact in the city Lowell whereby there'll be employees there. There'll be taxes brought in from the residential units and the property taxes, as well as the taxes that are generated throughout the use of the two proposed restaurants. So it fits exactly in to what the city seeks in this area. And this, we have incorporated a lot of the suggestions from the planning department into this plan before you. And one issue that I did see that they wanted to question the board on is the trash removal. So since that time, my client has addressed that by handing you, a inset will show what the Gao's use in other properties that they own. And they have a company, Harvey &amp; Sons, who will privately and independently come in and remove this trash and bring it right back to the backside of the project where there's a little courtyard. I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to go back there, but it's pretty interesting. You have, it's a courtyard in the back, and I guess a lot of places on Appleton Street have these, but it's a little, you don't, it looks like a facade from the front, but when you go back there, there's actually, you know, a courtyard, and it's usable. So they can access Winter Street on the back there, and that's what they plan on doing. So with the parking reduction for 50%, and with the special permit from this board for the residential units, it would allow my clients to then go before the board of appeals next Tuesday. And if they get approval from that board for the variance for no on-site parking, then they would start the construction documents through Mr. Caveney, and they would present before the historic board and work with Steve Stoll, which they've already been in contact with, and do what he wants them to do regarding the facade of the building and kind of slowly tearing it down so he can kind of research what was there before by the materials. So he's going to do that. They've already agreed to do that. So it's going to be a very interesting project, and I think a positive project for the city of Lowell. And Mr. Caveney is here to answer all the questions related to the facade or the units themselves and how they'll be set up and lighting and so forth. So I'll be, I'll stand by to answer any other questions you have, but I'm going to introduce Mr. Caveney now. John?
Yeah, if you guys have any questions, I mean, as Steve laid out, it's ground floor, two commercial units, and then a, on the second floor, studio and a two-bedroom, and then on the third floor, two two-bedrooms. The facade work is going to be limited to the ground floor there. The windows were replaced through conversations with the historic board and Steve Stoll a couple of years ago. So our work is going to be limited to that ground story, basically creating in that center area where there's wood cladding on the front, opening that up to more of a storefront system to get more light into the commercial units. Basically putting new doors and cladding treatment reminiscent of historic materials, and then historically relevant downlighting as well. And any questions you guys have, I can answer as well.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak for behalf of the applicant? Counsel?
I think that's it for now, but the chairman's here to answer any questions you might have to.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll open up to the public. If anybody this evening wants to speak in favor of the project, anybody who wants in favor, 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 here and none. Anybody who wants to speak in opposition, in opposition, in opposition, opposition, here and none. At this point in time, I'll turn the comments over to the board members. Any board members have any questions, comments? Mr. Sneski?
Yes, I think that this is a very viable project. It's nice to see a building with historic value that has been not utilized at this point being restored and revitalizing that area, which is one of the goals of the city. In regards to the mitigation of the parking issues, I don't think that that would be inappropriate. I was over at that site mid to late morning this morning, saw virtually no cars parked along both sides of Appleton Street, maybe just a couple. And the adjacent, you know, parking lot, just, you know, a couple doors down, was, you know, only had a very few cars in it. I took the same drive-through just about an hour ago on the way here and found a very similar situation, you know, virtually no cars parked on the street, and maybe at most a quarter to a third of the lot being utilized. And I know from, you know, past personal experience, when Ricardo's was open, you know, I used that lot many, many times, you know, when I was going to Ricardo's, and there was always pretty good availability there. So I think that it's, would not be inappropriate for us to, you know, allow the special permit for the reduction in the parking. And one other item that comes to mind is the fact that the juvenile court will be moving out of there in about a year or so, which, at least until such time as that building becomes repurposed, that will put even less pressure on the area. And, you know, you can't look into the future, but I would say it's certainly, at least on the foreseeable future of the next several years, you know, that's going to be diminished as well. So I would be able to, you know, clearly support this project.
Thank you. Mr. Malovich?
I too support this project. I'm glad it's going to be a historic rehab, and it's going to provide some affordable housing in the city. The parking is not an issue. I went down this Appleton Street maybe every day last week or this week, and there was no parking on the street, little or no, even when the court was in session. So I see no impact to the area for parking. I support the special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich. Mr. Vichet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, Christine, on the comment letter for engineering, this more of a, this really isn't a suggested condition for us? This is just a comment from a...
Should we cross the video?
Yeah, that's something that they'll have to do when they hook it up. And so I think they're just trying to be thoughtful to give the property owner as much advance notice that that's an added cost.
Yeah, all right. I just want to make sure that that wasn't the intention. You know, I would agree with my colleagues looking at the building. It actually is a fairly attractive building from an architectural standpoint.
Yeah, it is.
For clarification, those two archways, those are, I hope those aren't going to be disturbed. I just, just the, what looks like a bad garage door put in between the two of them is...
I'm trying not to disturb those.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, although I know you're working with Steve Stoll, but I just...
Yeah. Yeah. And as we're working, as we're working with Steve Stoll, as Steve said, we're going to do some selective demolition from the inside to see what we can uncover from its past and see if that can inform the design of this new storefront as well.
And the main focus from which you can tell at the moment that obviously is not original, and you can tell, is that where the address is written, 102108 Appleton Street, that whole section right there, yeah?
Yeah, many, even Steve thought it could have been a firehouse back in the day. We haven't been able to find records of that.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting. Yeah, because it looks like it was meant to be a garage door, so to speak, but yeah.
Salvation Army used to be there. And yeah, we haven't been able to find too many good photos. That's why we're doing the selective demolition.
Oh, that's interesting.
But we did go to the Mass State Archives, found some plans there. They, unfortunately, they had the plans of the whole front elevation except the facade on the front.
Really? Yeah. Doesn't that figure? Interesting. Okay, no, I think architecturally, they're very interesting facade, that's for sure. Similar to my colleagues on the, I actually took some photos this morning at 10:20 exactly, and, you know, I think there were two cars parked in the public parking lot, and well, I guess along the street there were some. And there was two vehicles, the whole length of Appleton Street along that building that would park there. So clearly, you know, the impact is minimal. It's an urban downtown area. It's really a good repurpose of the building. Looking at the criteria for the special permit, you know, we're looking at what does it serve for social, economic, community needs. Obviously, the market rate housing we were talking about was mentioned earlier by counsel. Parking, again, I don't think it's going to be a burden on the, on that particular area. The neighborhood character, it is very urban in nature, so you're certainly going to be meeting the spirit of that, obviously, in the renovation. You're not trying to create space that just isn't there. Nobody's looking for green space on here. And the potential fiscal impact, obviously, is the taxes and creating some jobs with the local businesses as well. So certainly it meets the, I think, the criteria for the overall special permit. The parking, I know if you, if you just look at it from the criteria, you start to scratch your head when you look at the required parking and the fact that there really isn't any on the site. But I think really when you look at, when you, the surrounding area and the fact that it is a, an urban building in an urban neighborhood, I think that it fits with that, and I certainly wouldn't have an issue with what is being proposed here. Just the trash pickup, so how would that, looking at this, how does that even get out of the, out of the area? So do you come around the, it looks like you go behind the other building. It looks in the diagram that you have here. How does that?
Yeah, you'd exit the courtyard. There's a gate there in the rear of the courtyard. You take a right onto this, it's basically almost like a dirt alleyway, to the end of Winter Street right there. And then the idea would be those garbage dumpsters would be placed in an area that doesn't make any of the other streets or alleyways inaccessible, and then promptly brought back after.
Right, because is that the, is that the street where actually the new Salvation Army building is then? That goes alongside there? Is that?
I'm not sure if that's...
It would have to come out behind Salvation Army, you know, out to Summer Street behind where the old Norcross and Layton would be.
Right, I thought that was a little further up.
Would it go that far? Yeah, would it? And would that be a week, how would the pickup work on that then?
I believe it would be weekly.
Weekly, yes.
Weekly pickup, private pickup weekly by Harvey &amp; Sons. They have it, the same company does some of their other units. So these are, these barrels or tubs there, twice the size of what we use at home.
Yeah.
So there'd be three for trash and one for recycling, which, there's room for plenty more. And if that wasn't enough, they would add that, but they think that's sufficient based upon their experience. But there's plenty of room there. They had to add any, but they don't think that they would.
Okay, so they would be in the courtyard?
Right, and the private contractor would come in, retrieve them from there, bring them out, and bring them back.
That's what I want, okay. So you wouldn't be wheeling them out there for the private contractor then to be...
No, he would go get them, empty them, and bring them back.
And return them back. Okay, so they would all, all right.
Yeah, and this is what they do. So however they get it, they know the access route.
Okay. All right, good. No, thank you.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yeah, I'm in full supporting your project here. I think you could have a really nice building here when it's all said and done. Just a couple of points. It's important because you're bringing market rate housing into the downtown area, which I know, a lot of sensitivity to that, bringing people into the downtown. And secondly, I'll just mention something I think you already know. But Steve Stoll, I'm chairman of the historic board, and I know Steve very well, and he's very capable in really helping you here and bringing out the best in this design and really make it look good, so.
Right, and that's a mutually beneficial situation, you know. It's good for the city, and it's good for my client. He's a very good resource.
Yes, I just encourage you to work with him very closely, and you'll get a better job, believe me.
Yeah, right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I, for just clarification?
Sure, go ahead.
Are you required to work with the historic board? Are you doing that because you feel it would be the proper, is that?
It's in the downtown Lowell Historic Board Design Review. It's one of the odd sections of downtown that's still technically in the UMU.
Oh, okay, all right.
The downtown historic review district extends into the UMU.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, because that's why, yeah, it's not technically, but it falls...
It's not technically downtown, but it is in the downtown Lowell Historic Board Review District.
Okay, all right.
It's in the...
So we don't have to make it a condition. It's part of what has to happen. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, you said you had to follow up on that?
That's all I have.
I don't have a problem with the project at all. I mean, I know with dumpster, if it's private, I know they can, they can wait till the people come, then roll it out. They probably would qualify for the regular, I mean, the apartments would probably qualify for the city recycling regular bins anyways as well.
Right.
You know, so if you ever needed that as a backup. But these, I mean, the big one you're showing here, you'd probably need more for the, maybe more the restaurant use. But with the residential, I'm sure they'd be entitled to, you know, regular trash and recycling bins.
When they have a consultation with Harvey &amp; Sons coming up, so they're going to go over all that with them, like what their needs are and how they can fit there.
I think it's a nicer area. I mean, it's obviously nice to see a vacant building get redeveloped. Like I said, I have no problems with it. I think it's a good job. I think you did a good job up the street on Appleton Street, and I think as a result is making that Appleton Street corridor look a lot nicer. And I give you a lot of credit for that, counsel.
Yeah, no, I think in the future, the problem is right now that there's plenty of parking on Appleton Street, but there's a reason why there's plenty of parking. We don't want plenty of parking, right?
That's a good point, yeah.
So I think in three or four years, it's going to be a different corridor completely. And I hope it is.
Yeah, like I say, things change, times change. So whether there's parking garages in vicinity, what happens, you know. And like I say, as counsel mentioned earlier, with the different Hamilton canal with courthouse there, that whole neighborhood's going to be shaped a little bit different.
Yeah, maybe my office will be parking garage someday.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, because the registry deeds and the Bay Court's going to be gone, the district court's going to be gone, the juvenile court's going to be gone, and one big building, that's all three.
Change a lot down there, yeah.
All three men walking distance to this facility, so. Yeah, I have no problems with counsel. I think it's a great job. I give you a lot of credit.
Thank you.
So the board members, we need to vote for two special permits. Hopefully, you'll take one at a time if you don't mind. We need one for the residential use first, and then the parking second. If you can do it that way, if no one has any objections.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for the residential use of the building.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made, second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you vote yes, five in favor, none against, that motion carries. For the parking special permit, do you want to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for the reduction of the parking by 50%.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart. Again, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you vote yes, and that motion carries. Wish you well, good luck.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. McCall. Thank you.
Hopefully, you'll be seeing Mr. Lockhart again in the near future after you go to ZBA.
Yeah, that's going to be, that's going to be an interesting project.
He'd be looking forward to seeing you, because if you don't show up to see him, he knows something happened.
You know, when you really discover the history of these places, maybe it was a fire department, you know.
Yeah, could be.
Or whatever, yeah.
Moving along on the agenda, do we have any other business, any of the board members? Hearing none, I'll take that as a no. No further comments from board members?
Last night, we got it covered.
Nothing from staff at this time? Okay, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Malovich, second by Mr. Sneski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned, and again, happy anniversary to Mr. Mr. Vichet.
Thank you.
Yeah, right, Jerry.
Have a good night, and thank you, everyone. Have a good night, and thank you, everyone.